We're going to call this meeting to order for the pledge. We're going to honor our family members with a moment of silence. And we thank the board member, John Crowder, for his dedication. But of course, we remember that silence is important. Thank you. Major Jackson, carry on.
To God and the United States of America, and to the Republic, the Union State, the one nation, where God, where you live, where you can see God.
Thank you. Most for approval of agenda?
Most for approval of agenda?
I would like to pull off, um, Brown's class, if you'd please extend your.
All right. We will make, uh, that item seven and move all other items down one. Most for approval of agenda with amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. We are now going to, uh, have our John Crowder Award by Reverend Kirkpatrick, School Board District One.
For over three decades, John H. Crowder dedicated his life to supporting the youth of Union County. In honor of his enduring contributions and lasting impact, the Union County Board of Education presents the John H. Crowder Service Award every month to recognize exceptional high school students who actively contribute to their school and community. Recipients of this award excel academically and possess a well-established track record of community involvement. Tonight, we award the May John H. Crowder Service Award to a Monroe High School senior. Soshi Morales Rodriguez is a Health Science Academy mentor to ninth grade students, co-president, student government graphic designer, the band section leader for flutes, and the captain of woodwinds. Outside of school, she has led several community fundraising events for the Red Storm Marching Band. At church, she organized a pasada for her youth group to help them learn the true meaning of the Christmas holiday. Soshi is also an advocate for special needs students. She has volunteered as a Union County Special Olympics buddy for the last three years and volunteered with the Special Needs Prom in 2024. In 2023 and 2024, she volunteered as a translator for special needs program parent meetings. She is currently working evenings as a certified nursing assistant at Pruitt Nursing Home and also volunteers at the Senior Living Center around the holidays. Soshi has earned a band scholarship to North Carolina Central, where she plans to major in bioengineering. Board members and those who assembled here today, please join me in congratulating Soshi Morales Rodriguez as the May 2025 recipient of the John H. Crowder Service Award.
Thank you, Reverend Kirkpatrick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're excited to celebrate two outstanding employees who have been named UCPS Influencers for April. This program recognizes the dedication, passion, and exceptional work ethic of UCPS staff members who go above and beyond daily. What makes the UCPS Influencers Program special is that these honorees are nominated by our staff, students, families, and community members. Very people who witness their positive impact every day. I am honored to present Cynthia Henson, an exceptional children teacher at Central Academy of Technology and Arts, and Millicent Lockhart, a transportation manager for Northern Transportation. I will now invite the nominators to the podium to read the submission and recognize their honorees' accomplishments. Ivy Dishar, no, yes, Ivy Dishar, can you please come up?
Good evening, I'm Ivy Dishar, I'm a teacher at Wesley Chapel Elementary School. Ms. Henson, can you come forward? Ms. Henson is a true inspiration. She looks at her students' abilities and their class assignments to help them manage the coursework and be successful as students who do not have, who do not have, to be as successful as the students who do not have learning disabilities. She never counts out a student who is struggling for any reason. Instead, she works with the student to problem solve and address the issues that keep them from being successful. She is the foremost champion, supporting not only the students' challenges, but also working with their parents and often, and often their other teachers. She helps connect all the moving parts. Oftentimes, her students only know failure in the academic environment. Ms. Henson works hard to help them realize their true potential so that they can begin focusing on their successes. She also helps other teachers understand the challenges her students face so that those teachers can view the student in a more supportive light, leading to true success across the academic environment. She educates not only her students, but also other teachers and parents. Thanks to her explanations and insights, I now better understand the challenges that my own child faces and can more effectively support him. That understanding has also changed how I teach in my own classroom. The experiences and knowledge I gain from her, I can apply directly with my own students. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Brian Joyner, Director of Transportation. I'll be reading a nomination on behalf of Travis Johnson, one of our mechanics, who unfortunately couldn't be here. He nominated Ms. Lockhart, and I'm honored to share his words with you. Millicent has a lot of responsibilities and never lets it show that she may be overwhelmed. She is always in a good mood, smiling and waving every time you see her. She always takes time to ask how you are doing and if she can help you do something. When she has many tasks, she always takes times for others, and it is a pleasure to be able to be around her and experience her contagious lifting spirit. Thank you, Millicent.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I will now read the UCPS Influencers Proclamation from the Board of Education and Dr. Houlihan. Whereas, the Union County Board of Education values the hard work of each employee within the district, whereas, performance is an essential part of the district operations, whereas Cynthia Henson and Millicent exemplify the performance, dedication, and teamwork essential to the success of the district and its students. Now therefore, we, the Board of Education for Union County Public Schools, and Dr. Andrew G. Houlihan, Superintendent, hereby proclaim Cynthia Henson and Millicent as the UCPS Influencers for the month of May 2025.
All right. Next up is, uh, public comments. At every, uh, regular meeting of the board, up to sixty minutes have been allotted for public comments. The board will not respond to public comments. However, a member may ask that the chairman obtain clarification. Residents, parents, students, and employees of the district will receive priority on the, on the list of speakers. If a speaker is not present when his or her name is called, the opportunity to speak will be considered waived. Only persons signed up may speak. Speakers may not give their time to another person or have someone speak on their behalf. Speakers, speakers may address the board for a maximum of three minutes. The board will not hear in open session complaints about the performance of school personnel, personnel issues, confidential student issues. Should a speaker wish to seek information or share items that may not be shared during public comments, members of the UCPS Cabinet Staff are available to address your concerns or provide information. Cabinet Staff members are seated at the table to my left. Tonight, we have, as our first, uh, public speaker, is Luna Portilio Delgado.
I wrote down the word and said it many times, rumors. That is what a member of the Union County Board of Education stated when speaking on students' concerns about UCPS's policies involving ICE. The threat of Union County families being separated by ICE is a legitimate concern. Just because a Union County school hasn't directly been affected by ICE yet does not mean the communities our UCPS students live in are not affected. As stated on the April first Union County Board of Education meeting, a robust statement by Andrew Houlihan was made on UCPS's policy and procedures involving any law enforcement. But I oppose to that. A single vague social media post is not a robust statement that you would expect from the people entrusted with taking care of your children. It is a juvenile means of communication that plainly illustrates the weaponized incompetence and ignorance involving UCPS's education on the topic of immigration students struggle. But the real ignorance is shown when only one member of the Board of Education, Reverend Kirkpatrick, took the time to speak to the students and community involving the concerns that sparked the two Monroe High School walkouts. The real ignorance is shown that when the same board member hosted a town hall meeting so that students of Union County could voice their opinions and ask questions to the members of the Board of Education, no other members took any initiative to communicate with students or show up and speak to students who stand before you protesting against your schools so that they could have a better education. Out of all the things in the world to ask for, the students of Monroe High School asked for two simple things. One, a statement stating UCPS schools are a safe zone from ICE and immigration. Two, equal treatment and opportunity and funding for all UCPS students. Two simple things that no student should ask for. As a person who has been raised in faith and has experienced faith, I have never considered mixing the imperfect laws of the land with the laws that God has put in place for us. But when a meeting is open in prayer and students are not protected, I feel compelled to remind you all of a verse that I live by. First Timothy five eight. Certainly if anyone does not provide for those who are his own, and especially for those who are a member of his household, he has disowned the faith and is worse than a person without faith. When you fail to provide for your students and community with peace of mind, and when you disown your students' concerns as nothing more than a rumor, I plead with you to remember what else you are disowning.
Our next speaker is Ms. Cynthia Singleton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Three minutes. Three minutes is the time limit for each of the constituents to share their public comments. Three minutes is the amount of time that's required to give your undivided attention to these constituents to simply listen to their opinions regardless of your personal judgments. Three minutes. Three minutes is the amount of time that's required to listen with outside conversations with your fellow board members. Three minutes is the amount of times that's required to listen without using cell phones and other, uh, electronic devices. Three minutes is the amount of time that's required to listen without rolling your eyes, deep sighs, and making other obviously exasperating expressions. Three minutes is the amount of time that's required to sit up straight without slouting and appearing disinterested and disengaged. Three minutes is the amount of time that you can role model respect for those who are speaking versus criticizing and threatening to remove those speakers when they are being publicly disrespected by board members exhibiting, exhibiting the behaviors that I just described. The board recognizes and welcomes its responsibility to hear requests and suggestions from delegations and individuals in the community. This is an excerpt taken directly from your Union County Board of Education role and responsibility. Board members, it's belittling and insulting for you to expect a level of respect from your constituents that you yourselves are not willing to give. Mr. Chair, as the leader of this board, I ask you to seriously take this under advisement and address your board to consider the leadership image that you wish to portray. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Skylar Breeder. You said Brea?
Brader.
Brader, Ms. Skylar Brader. Thank you for that.
Hi, I'm Skylar, and I'm in the sixth grade at Cuthbertson Middle. And I'm here to talk about ICE and protecting our students while following federal laws. I'm here for two things, a change of wording to the policy that ICE must have a judge-signed warrant, and the parents should be given a reasonable amount of time for the parent, a reasonable amount of time for the parents to be present when law enforcement speaks, speaks to a student. For me and my friends, it's unbelievably traumatizing to even think that law enforcement can take a student. I'm also aware that six other counties in North Carolina have put updated policies that, for ICE, to engage with students, and I'm asking for you to be the seventh. I know that Union County Schools cares about their students. And I even read, in my reading class, above the door, there is a sign that says, "Schools, school is a safe place." And adding these two items will help, really, will really help, will really help improve the protecting of our students. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Gorden Gibbons, Brandon Gibbons.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As a deeply concerned parent, I am here today regarding my son's experience in his third grade class at Newtown Elementary this school year. Frankly, I am at a loss for words and unsure what steps to take next. My son's education experience has disappointed and discouraged him and our family. There has been a troubling lack of communication from beginning of the year. We received no information about quizzes, tests, or classroom expectations for the first two months. While occupation, while occasional pop quizzes are understandable, the lack of transparency and communication with parents is not. Our son has reportedly told us that the teacher gives tests whenever she feels like it. We, we sought clarification. We were told that communication would improve, yet nothing changed. Imagine not being told that a test is coming up, let alone what content will be covered. Yet the child is held accountable for the school's lack of common sense. Our son has endured a school year marked by unclear expectations, inconsistent academic support, and delayed grading. Weeks passed before grades appear in power school. When we inquire about missing assignments, we were met with defensiveness. How can we help our son improve if we cannot see where he's struggling? The weekly folder sent home often will mid-grade work. When we ask how we can support our son at home, we receive an answer, "Just do IXLs." Meanwhile, we are left to guess what topics are being taught, only to find what we are, we study with him doesn't match what appears on tests. We've raised our concerns to the principal and even contacted the superintendent's office. In both instances, we were redirected back to the school without resolution, accountability, or support. What began as sincere outreach has become a source of deep frustrate frustration. I understand that teaching comes with challenges, but those challenges cannot excuse a breakdown in communication, a lack of structure, or the absence of meaningful engagement with families. The only ones accountable for what happens in third grade are the children, and they are completely being set up to fail. I would like to say there are a lot of great teachers in that school, and my daughter is also a student in other school, Cuthbertson Middle Down, and a completely different experience. And that's all I have to say.
Our next, uh, speaker is that Kobe or Cobie? Kobe Blackburn.
Hi, my name is Kobe, and I'm here as a Union County resident, as a mother, and as a human being. Last time I was here, I was wrongfully told to leave because apparently this board can't take public comment seriously and yet has the audacity to police children about decorum. After my removal, I was told by police to be quiet that we were annoying you. So let me remind you, you are an elected official. Your job isn't to sit on your phone and roll your eyes at your constituents who are expressing real fear and concern in our community. How can you sit there and preach about decorum yet refuse to do the same with your own board members? I made sure to watch what was said after my removal, and I'm appalled by the lack of empathy from the board and chair members concerning your students' fears. To have the audacity to suggest that we are fear mongering when you are already witnessing attacks on immigrants and students all across the country? Let's look at the facts, like you said. In California, Los Angeles Unified School District confirmed ICE in multiple occasions trying to enter elementary schools. Three children, all U.S. citizens, were deported to Honduras, one which is a cancer patient who was undergoing treatment. Mamukalil was a Columbia student who was kidnapped over a month ago with legal status and being held in a Louisiana detention center to this day. Rumeza Ozturk, another university student, was kidnapped by six plainclothes agents on the streets and is still being held in a detention center, and that was weeks ago. Union County being the sixth largest school system that we apparently love bragging about on our website, yet it seems that the majority of the board members are uneducated on matters happening in our country? Or does it only matter if it directly affects you? You don't need to be an immigrant for you to care about immigrant rights. You don't need to be a minority to care about DEI. You just need to be human. And to start with prayer, yet ignore your community and tell them that you won't, and I quote, "refuse or stand in the way of any legal efforts by law enforcement and won't impede them" when that effort is literally state-sanctioned kidnapping and unlawful by multiple judges is hypocrisy. And I see multiple people who've grown too comfortable in their chairs and complicit in their own small minds. It's frightening to see disingenuous, disrespectful, and condescending people in a place of power when our community is clearly not your priority. We are demanding real preventative measures to be announced and implemented all across Union County schools, not just empty blanket statements that mean nothing and do nothing. It's called preventative measures means it doesn't have to happen yet in Union County for you to care or to stand with your students? Or did you need me to define that more considering the board seems uneducated in the matter? You should be ashamed of yourselves by your utter disregard of your constituents and your students and the clear lack of serien, seriousness in our concerns. And finally, let me be clear, I don't need a podium for you to hear me speak, nor do I need your permission to. It's my right, whether you like it or not, to speak out against injustice specifically in my own community. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Ingrid Portilio.
As a Hispanic, let me just start, I have my own speech. But I'm a little concerned with the excessive force that we have from the Monroe Police Department and the Sheriff's Office today. Why is that? We've been coming around here for what, this is our third meeting in a row? And every time I come here, I see more and more police officers. Are they here to harass us? Are they here to arrest us? Are you guys here to show force that we're not welcome here? That's what it feels like, because every time I show up here, there's more and more police officers. What is the UCPS board trying to tell me as a parent? As a member of the community? That I'm not welcome here, that my opinion doesn't matter? I have rewritten my own speech, but this is what I observed when I came in here. I'm disgusted by you. It's disgusted that you stand there and watch as members of the community is suffering, and you're not doing anything about it, just standing there like hawks, waiting. Waiting for what? But my speech is for the students of Monroe High School. I'm here to applaud the courageous students from Monroe High School for uniting as one on, on this two students walkout in the March to Center office, for speaking out on the, out on the Board of Education, attending city council meetings, town hall group meetings, attending two protests in downtown Monroe, and for speaking in Charlotte in front of over two thousand people where Tom Tillis was invited to attend. For months now, Monroe students have demanded three things, two things from UCPS. UCPS never cooperates with ICE. UCPS declares our schools safe zones. And they have been with silence, which can only be described as your silence is violence from UCPS board members. The youth is holding you accountable. Those same students won't be children forever. They will be boarding, and they will be boarding you out. They will never forget how you failed to protect them when they needed you to stand on their defense. What is, I want, with that, I want to thank Kirkpatrick, the only board member from District One for caring and talking to the students and hearing their struggles and their sufferings from the students at Monroe High School. As a Hispanic living in Monroe, we have no representation at the Board of Education, at the schools, at the city of Monroe. There's no one to hear me when I'm screaming that we need help, that we need you to stand with the Hispanic community who is being targeted. The youth is aiming to change that in Monroe. They have the Hispanic population in Monroe supporting them. Lastly, I want to make, end my public comment with this. During each meeting, I have noticed that you start with a prayer. Who are you praying to, into the void?
Our next speaker is David Portilio Delgado.
My last name is Portillo. It was not my intention to speak today. I believe that this issue would have been resolved. Clearly, I was mistaken. Let me say this to the UCPS board. Students have a right to be heard, especially when that concern brings them to march in the streets of downtown Monroe. They rightfully must be heard by those they present a demand to. Looking at all of you. The demands of the student protests on March 5th and April 1st should have been heard, but it has been made clear that they will not be heard. The rights of the high school students were taken away from them to peacefully protest. It is undeniable, nobody can deny it. I would dare anybody to challenge this notion, especially when there was an excess, excessive deployment of the Monroe Police Department to Monroe High School. We will, will remain committed to pushing for a statement from the Board of Education that will state that ICE is not welcomed in our schools. We know that the students are fighting a conservative system held up by the Board of Education. We know that the Board of Education is a stubborn meal. And we know that the Board of Education is refusing to write a statement because of the backward and conservative views. To those who keep on pushing those conservative values, I say, keep dreaming. Your beliefs are one of a decaying and outdated ideology and will inevitably be replaced by a new and superior one. Your worldview was shaken by Monroe High School and will continue to be shaken until it falls.
Our last speaker today is, uh, Ms. Jane Sanders.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So, um, I'm gonna hit a couple bills real quick. So House Bill 806 is about fifty percent of our teachers don't need to be certified in schools requiring, um, teacher certification is kind of what you would hope that a, um, a, a school teacher would be. Um, it also recommends that class size. Nation because they have issues with keeping teachers employed here in North Carolina. Um, so I guess my question is, what does that mean for Union? We have all seen the growth, but we have no funding for new buildings. Our budget isn't going to be met this time. So, um, what are we gonna do when our class sizes expand and the families are pretty annoyed because already our class- because already our classes have 25 to 30 people in them? And then we're going to talk about H B 192, which increases the base salary. That's definitely worth fighting for. It's still going through legislation, so let's continue to push that one through. And House Bill 171, the elimination of the D E I program, the ooh and ah scary word that we all keep talking about, which I sent you all an email, and so thank you for that response, which I got none, which was not surprising, disappointing, but not surprising. And we know which, how am I, okay. So we know that when you guys are upset about a particular bill, that you do rally together because our county commissioners are rallying together about fighting the housing requirements. And all the people in the state are actually local Union County elected officials that pushed that bill through. And now they've riled up the whole county to be mad to write to all of our elected officials over that bill. So we know that when you're unified and you can reach out, because Dean Arp has already said he's going to exclude Union County from that. So when we ask you guys to write to the state legislators and have those conversations, things can happen, okay? And I just want to say, I want to thank the board for recognizing the young student, the elementary child that had passed away, and that we know that there was a lot of public backlash about how that was handled. So thank you for making that possible. But I'd also like to take a moment to take and honor another young man, Messiah Barano. I apologize if I said his name wrong. That was murdered. He was a victim of gun violence, and he was a student at Monroe Middle School, and he never got a moment of silence. So when we honor one, we honor all. When we support one, we support all. And then I'll just finish with thanking Reverend Kirkpatrick for actually taking the time to listen, console, honor, and respect our Latino community. We ask that each of you board members host your own meetings. This is 600 square miles of a county, and each of you should hear your constituents. Thank you.
We thank those that gave public comments today. Our next item is our open session minutes for April 1st and April 10th. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right. Motion for consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have item Crown Castle lease extension for M S. Slap. For M S. Mr. Moore.
Is it coming through? Okay. Apologize for not having a tremendous amount of information, but I do want to ask you for your approval tonight. We've put the memo in the, in the package to ask for an extension to a lease that's been in place since 2011 with Crown Castle. This is on the middle school, high school D site in the Hemby Bridge area. We were approached by Crown Castle, which is the company that is leasing the land from us for this, for this cell tower, and they requesting, they had a request of a 30-year extension. They're trying to attract another cell provider on the tower, and they require at least a 20-year lease before, before they'll consider it. The current lease is set to expire in 2032, and we negotiated down to only have an 18-year extension. We'll extend the cell tower lease until 2050. We are currently getting $1,508 a month for the cell tower lease, and we are also getting 20% of the subtenants' rent on those towers, which totals right now about $1,205. We are set for a 15% increase every five years. Under the new proposal, Crown Castle is offering to increase that monthly rent to $2,000 per month in addition to the 20% of the rent that they're getting paid, and they're also offering a $20,000, if you will, signing bonus. So glad to entertain any questions.
Questions?
So where on the property is the cell tower in relation to where a school would be built?
So I, I have been able to locate some preliminary schematic plans for middle school, high school D. And the location of the cell tower is in the northernmost part, northernmost part of the property. It's not exactly on the edge of the property, and without having measuring tools on the G I S, I wasn't able to tell, but it's not, I wouldn't call it in the middle of the property. The drawing, the preliminary schematic drawings that I've seen have a location indicated on the drawings, what appears to be this cell tower fenced off area. And it's, it's located in an area near like parking lots and some playing fields, not, not so much close to the school.
We've talked about, um, these, and are we going to sell it? So we have to do that. So what was going to happen with the cell tower?
So if, if we sell the property, that lease would go, or that easement would go with the sale of that property? Yes. We don't, we currently.
So that would help?
Pardon me?
Not help. It would be unhelpful if we have that on the land, right? Because they have to take it?
The people that buy it would have to take it, and then the, the rent payments that we're getting would then transfer to the new owner. Yes. Of the cell tower? The cell tower is about .17 acres, so it's a very small parcel of land.
How much, yeah, how much is middle school, high school D? Like 110 acres?
That I'm going from memory, but I think, I want to say it's, we have two separate parcels. I know one of them is 110. I think the other one was, is about 30, but I would need to get back to you on that for sure, but I'm, I'm thinking it's around 140 or 150 acres. But again, I would like to confirm that.
So we learned a lot from our, our parents and constituents about Rayview, right? So the location of where that proposed cell tower was in regards to where this cell tower currently is on the property, can you help us understand that?
Without being able to lay my hands right this evening on those, on those, if you, if you remember, those plans were, were taken to almost a permitting stage when that project was pulled off the shelf. I have not been able to locate those drawings this evening, but without knowing that, I can't answer for sure.
But you said it would be near parking and athletic fields?
The schematic drawing that I found, which is a very hand-sketched drawing, located in a, near a parking area and some fields. But I don't know that that was the final plan that they went with.
Okay. And for everyone's awareness, the, the Rayview was basically adjacent to a children's playground, right? Which is why we made the decision to.
It was 200 to 300 feet. I, I, from the, from looking at it on this drawing, it appears to be, I, I can scale it to be probably more than 400 to 500 feet, but I don't know exactly how far it is.
Okay. But not near, I mean, we don't have middle school playgrounds, high school playgrounds, correct? So.
Yeah, they wouldn't be, it'd be like, these are like baseball, softball, football fields.
Okay. Thank you.
So how close is it to Hemby Bridge Elementary? Because that's.
Um, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but it's, it's down the road about a half to three quarters of a mile.
Like close to the bridge? Or is it the opposite?
No, it's going the other way.
So is it like by the, is it outside the fields?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Like out, so it's not directly on Hemby Bridge's vicinity? We don't want it like.
Are you familiar with the Reich Cemetery?
Yes.
That's, it's right, it's, it's back in behind there.
Okay. I was curious how close it was to them.
My issue is if we want to sell it, right? And the price will go down if they don't want the tower. That's my issue.
Um, I, I don't have an answer for that, but if, if I was in the developer's shoes and I'm getting 140 to 150 acres, and a, and a lease that's expired in, you know, in 25 years, I, it's not taking up a lot of area. I don't see it as being significantly detrimental to the selling price. Again, I can do some research on that to see how that affects the appraised value of that.
Ms. Moore, do you anticipate us selling this piece of property anytime soon?
We have not currently surplus, the Board of Education has not surplus, but we don't currently have anything on the long-range plans to be built on that site.
Would we have any need of selling this property, to your knowledge?
If we don't see, whereas, if we don't see a, a need to build a new.
So, um, you sure? Okay. So the certified supplement increase, the previous presentation that we did, we originally had requested or presented a $2,000 increase to our local teacher supplement in an effort to try to balance and, and make some adjustments to our budget based on what we've heard from the county, the appropriations and the increases that we were going to get. We've cut that to a $1,000 flat increase in an effort to try to balance the budget. We've done, oh.
Do you, yeah, do you want questions at the end or during?
You can ask questions whenever you want to. Yeah, that's fine.
So we were, we're 37th, and then if we had done the 2,000, we would have been hopefully 10th, but maybe 15th.
Correct.
So where does this put us?
This would put us at 17.
With nobody making any changes?
Right.
So where would it really put us?
It would take us to 17. I, my estimate is, it hopefully would get us in that top 20. If we weren't 17, that, I don't know that we would fall much lower than, than that, based on the districts that I see below, like below that line, right? So most of the larger districts do such big increases that they're not going to knock us out of that ranking, but.
And so this is probably like a 1.5% on average?
Right.
Because I think 2,000 was 3%?
Yes.
And where was the 2,000 going to put us in ranking?
At 10.
So you, you said you're talking with the county. What talks have you had with the county that indicated they wouldn't pay the 2,000? Just what you're hearing?
Our April 10th meeting, they gave us our dollar figure, right, of anticipated growth, which was 8.6 million. So when I get, when we get through, there's still an additional ask of the county of $3 million with even some of these adjustments that we've made. We've just tried to get closer to a balanced budget proposal based on that information they shared on April the 10th.
Two points. The board certainly, this will end up being the board's budget.
Yes.
So if the board wants to advocate for that 2,000, we certainly can do that, and we can make that revision.
Right.
Based on the conversation in the joint meeting, this was our best recommendation of, of what we thought would be a more doable budget. The second thing that I want to point out to this board, because we did not realize this until this, this past week, during my tenure with U C P S, which is going on, I'm in my ninth year, there has never been a, a budget cycle where we have increased teacher supplements in back-to-back years. That has never happened, where in two consecutive years, we have increased teacher supplements. And if this is funded fully, this will be the first time during that timeline that we have back-to-back consecutive years of, of increasing supplements, which I think is, would say a lot to our teachers and our, those that are on that certified staff in terms of the support of the county and support of this school board. So if you weren't aware of that fact, I wanted to make sure that this is another big important item for us and for our teachers in particular.
Can you tell me about the $240,000 for organization changes?
Yes. So what we've done on the, that organizational change would be a reorganization of our exceptional children's department. What they have been, they've been doing some review and evaluation of their current structure based on some of the positions that they know they need. They're trying to rework those positions, redo some job descriptions, and do a complete reorganization of that whole department so that we can better serve our students and our families in the district.
And then the next one, the program expansion?
Yes. So that is, that includes two nurses. We have a, we're, we're working, this would be year one of a five-year plan to put a nurse in every, in every school building. So that includes two additional nurses for next year. It includes an additional month of employment for our elementary schools. Our elementary clerical staff are our data managers and bookkeepers. We want to make both of those positions 12 months with the implementation of Infinite Campus and all the things that are going on. We really see the need in elementary schools for those positions to both be 12 months. It also includes a clerical support for legal, because as I mentioned, some of the E C supports that are needed. The legal department needs some additional clerical support to help support the families as well. And it includes a technology programming support position.
Okay, the next one? Or, let's dive in. So how much is, is in there for?
That is a $400 a month increase for the board.
I thought we talked about 200. No? Did we talk about 200?
There was, there was a recommendation for a 200, an approval for a $200 a month increase in the current school year that we, we talked about in February. And it was my understanding that it was a multi-year approach to get the board's compensation more closely aligned with other districts. So that, that rolled into this budget request.
Yeah, that, that was my question.
Okay.
How did that, how did that get there? Yeah, that's, that's kind of, because I know what we voted on, what some of us voted on, and it was denied, so now it's just being reworded or put in a different space within this budget.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. McLam, was, was the $200 denied?
I, I don't have any informa, I, I don't, I can't answer that.
This board approved it. The, the county commissioners chose not to vote on.
We, right, we submitted it to the county. I don't know.
Yeah, the county, board of county commissioners never took it up, so that, that was gone. This is a fresh proposal.
I think I'm right, but it was their recommendation to put it on the budget versus passing that recommendation. Correct?
Yeah, that was one of the things that they said that we could do.
Well, we, we had a present, we've done this presentation twice with, we, we did the presentation at the April board meeting, and then we did the presentation again with the, the county. But we didn't vote on.
Now, this, this is their budget proposal. We'll, we'll be getting this once they finish making that presentation.
Well, based on feedback from tonight, if there are adjustments that you all would like to recommend and vote on to, to make to this, those adjustments I could make before this is sent to, excuse me, before this is sent over to the county staff at the end of the week.
I, I have another question. Sorry. Talent acquisition, when we got the budget last month, weren't we talking about internships for?
We did, and we, again, we've scaled back. So we did remove the psychology interns. We're trying to, again, make some adjustments to the budget lines. The, the compensation market adjustments have also come down. We, we've cut back trying, in an effort, even though there's going to be additional ask to the county, we, we're trying to budget to, and reconcile the proposal as close as we can within reason and still meet all of our needs.
So reorg?
Go ahead.
From A, for E C? I mean, obviously, you could do a reorg without it costing money, I think, I'm pretty sure. So is there like a plan that we could see as far as, like, how many positions are we talking?
I mean, we could probably have some of those discussions, but I don't have anything this evening that I could present based on that.
I have a question. So if we don't like something on that budget, can we vote on that line?
Yeah, you can, you can, you all could make a recommendation to adjust specific lines, and I can make some of those adjustments, and then that will be what is included and voted on and approved tonight, and that would be what we would recommend and submit to the county.
Okay.
Yeah. So with the C I P, or the capital improvement request and the operating capital, facilities did go through our maintenance projects and made some adjustments. So this number of 15,450 is what came out of committee. We made some adjustments as well based on some recommendations from transportation, based on some discussion at S B T T. This transportation request includes three activity buses, which is, we originally had eight, and there, they had a replacement vehicle, you know, like a work truck and another vehicle. School nutrition equipment, we did cut that one in half as well to, from 500 to 250. The technology is our laptop leases, which does include the tariff we discussed. The technology is our laptop leases, which does include the, um, tariff we discussed. And our band uniform replacement plan is on a ten-year, and this coming year will be for Piedmont High School. So that brings our capital request to twenty million eight oh one.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, the band uniforms and equipment, um, so each year, we, um, identify a school that needs uniforms?
We, well, we have a list.
Okay.
And they're on a ten-year rotation. So we started at the first one based on the last replacement they had.
Gotcha.
So we had a ten-year plan, when we get to the end of the ten years, we'll start back over again.
When, when was, um, Monroe High School?
I think they might have been the first one we did.
They did.
And this is probably year seven or eight of us doing this.
Coming around.
So they're probably pretty close to coming back up to the top.
Do we, do we make, okay, I see what you're saying, but do we also make the determination by the strength of like the band boosters?
No, this is a, this is, everybody gets that fifty thousand.
Gotcha, okay.
And depend, like sometimes, maybe the, if the booster has recently replaced something, maybe they can use it for a piece of equipment that's super expensive. But they have to make sure, the, the criteria is that they have to have all of their uniforms have to be up to date, and they have all that they need before they can use any of these dollars for anything, any equipment.
Is there an opportunity to leave how we've been doing it, but have some, some finances that if a school is in need, maybe their, their band has increased, maybe, um, they have more members, a small lump sum of money that a band could maybe apply for like a grant or something, if they need special assistance to help them doing that here? Because I know some of, some of our schools have struggled.
Hmm.
Um, and like you said, the first one was Monroe High School, and a lot can transpire since the first time they received fifty thousand dollars.
Correct.
And band equipment is expensive.
It is.
Uniforms are, um, expensive. I was second chair trombone, I was good too, but, uh, uh, that stuff can get costly.
Well, and we did do, the board did approve a, a large equipment order, um, two years ago, I think. So we are trying to, as we can through the budget process, identify those kind of things and try to provide, you know, what are the needs across the district and make some of those equipment purchases or other things to make sure that we can keep some of those bands, because a lot of that stuff is very expensive.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Reverend Patrick, have you had a, uh, someone that has identified some needs to you?
Well, I do know that a lot of our band boosters on the east, uh, eastern part of the county are not as strong as some of them on the western side of the county. And I do know that there has been some challenges, um, with uniforms and, uh, equipment and things of that nature. So, that's why I made the suggestion that, um, if a school may need some additional support, not fifty thousand dollars, but let's say, uh, they can receive a grant or something of five thousand to ten thousand dollars that may be able to support a school that's really in need after they apply or go through the process or what have you, to support that school if they need the help. I mean, some of us may not need help today, but we don't know what tomorrow looks like, so.
That, that idea, Reverend Patrick, I'm, I'm certainly, um, willing to have a conversation with the executive director of our Union County Education Foundation. That might be funds as a grant that she could set aside for individual schools to apply for as needed as another funding source.
I have one more question on that.
I have a question before we go on. Um, the board stipend increase, um, four hundred dollars, can we go down to two hundred? I don't want any, but, uh, two hundred instead?
Are you making a motion?
I'm asking if anybody wants to do it. Yes. Okay, I'll make a mo, a motion to put in two hundred, uh, a month increase. I don't like it though, but it's better than four hundred dollars.
Shawna, do you, before we vote, do you have the, um, chart with the other counties, the top, Big Twelve?
I, I mean, I could probably-
Are there supplements in there? Is a supplement thing in there?
Is what?
The supplement. So you have to look at how much you could pay and the supplements for the teachers at the same time.
Well, we've got the supplement, and if we get the stipend, we would have both.
It's not the stipen, I'm not talking about the stipend, I'm talking about, um, teacher supplement. If there's, there's, there's no second, that's, motion to change it to two hundred, uh, a month instead of four hundred a month increase.
We have a motion, uh, on the floor, is there a second? Here or not, continue.
No second?
There was no second. Continue, Ms. McLamb.
So as we get to the summary page, um, to summarize all of the information that I've just presented, um, our current operating budget is a hundred and thirty million six eleven. The, the increase in the change from our current year is ten million eight seventy-seven, which brings us to a hundred and forty-one million four eighty-nine two oh two for our proposed operating for next year. With capital, we currently get nineteen million nine fifty. Um, with all the items that we discussed, that, that's an increase of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, to bring us to the twenty million eight oh one. So, um, altogether, that's a hundred and sixty-two million two ninety, two thirty-one. Um, from our meeting on April the tenth, the county provided the, the increase or proposed increase of eight million six oh eight three eighty, or eight thirty-seven, um, which would still leave us, um, additional funding requests of three million one eleven nine oh nine.
Can I ask my question? On the, back to the band, do they know ahead of time, like, do we put a list out so the schools know, oh, we're getting our money next year, or?
We do, we do tell, we do tell the schools so they can start preparing, cause it does take them a little bit of time to go through the process of picking out some of their stuff.
Right.
Um, they get really excited though, and they wanna like do it before we get the money approved. So we do try to provide them that information ahead of time so they can be prepared, so that when July rolls around, they're ready to do their orders.
Is that something we can put on a website? It's like a graphic or with the year?
Sure, I, I mean, I, I don't mind working with Tahara and her team to put something together if you all would like that.
I think that'd be good.
Hmm?
I would like to propose a motion though, that we do not reduce the teacher supplement and we keep it at two thousand. I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Here or not, the motion carries. Thank you.
So I, I will make that adjustment in the budget recommendation. I do also want to remind you all that this is a budget proposal, right? So there are potential changes, cause we don't know all the state information, we don't know what increases or changes might come through on the state budget. So I just wanna kinda put that out there, that we make these budget proposals, and most likely, once we get all of our final funding appropriations, and that there may be a time for me to come back to you all and tell you, this is what, you know, when we do the budget resolution, we'll come back and have those conversations of, of what of all of these things were we, did we get the funding for that we could fund?
Shawna, do you, do you recall how up-
Well, so, the original, the original presentation that I did had us requesting like twenty-seven million, so then we got eight, eight point six, right? Right, so, it, we, we originally were over probably eighteen to nineteen million dollars.
And now we're gonna be eight or nine?
Now we'll, no, now we'll probably be more like six.
Four, four ups.
Right, to double, to double, to, to put the two thousand back, to put the two thousand back-
Grab another four million.
Right. So we'll be, so we'll be like six or seven million additional that we're gonna be asking for, yes.
Can I, can I ask one more question? You were talking about the state. So, one of the budgets that's come out so far, I think the Senate, is they're talking about a percent, but then also a fifteen hundred dollar bonus.
Correct.
So for our positions that we have to fund locally, is that included in the mandated?
No.
We don't have that included.
Because, because I, I can't, like, that would be something that I would have to come back to you all if it passes. So the governor's budget had, had a one, a bonus included, plus a percentage. The senate budget had a, had one as well. Um, you know, that would leave us funding any of our non-state paid employees, which, if I estimate on fifteen hundred dollars, it's about two million dollars. So there may need to be some adjustments in this budget, because depending on when the state passes their budget, we may have to make some tough decisions about how to do some of those things, right? Um, you know, one, one thing is, that is a one-time payment, right? So, you know, there's, there's options that we could, that we could discuss, um, once all of those numbers are filed.
Like, what kind of options?
I mean, you could, you could designate fund balance, because it's a, it's a one-time payment. Um, so, we do have, that's, that's some of why we always like to make sure we have fund balance, you know, but we're not replenishing our fund balance, um, at a rapid pace. But if, if the state passed something that required us to make, make that difference up, we'd have to have those conversations about, do we use fund balance, do we make adjustments to other line items? Because as in years past, we wouldn't, some of these items that we're talking about, even if we get local funding, they're not going to be implemented till we know for sure what the state's doing, because we only do, you know, we're not gonna piecemeal any increases or anything that, that staff gets, right? So we make sure that we have all of those numbers before we implement any of the items that we approve.
Thank you.
Ms. McLamb, seeing that you just brought up fund balance, does this budget increase our fund balance at all or keep it flat? What's the intention there?
So this is a budget recommendation that requests more appro- building the budget to all approve, that would be, that'll be a few months from now. Um, that's where we would have these conversations, if you all say that, um, something in the state budget or something we've prepared for exceeds what we planned on, then we'd have to have those conversations about-
Well, it's about spending, and is there anything about replenishing or-
Oh.
Further building it, which was the recommendation of our auditor, right?
It, it was, yes. Um, and at the end of the, once we get closer to year end and we see how our, this year's budget has gone, have we had lapse, enough lapse salaries to, to have any funds remaining? Um, I'm not at a point where I'm ready, like, where I can really speak to whether or not we'll be adding the fund balance this year.
I do wanna thank you for taking some of the recommendations that we had in spit on the activity buses, the additional activity buses, and pulling that to the need.
Yes.
So, thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. McLamb, um, going back to the, um, board member, um, board member, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Uh, the board member increase, um, is it possible to make a re, recommendation to just remove that entire line item, that entire line, line item?
If you make a mo-
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, so I, I'd like to make a motion that we leave the budget as it is, but remove the entire, um, amount that, uh, was allotted for board member increase.
Um, just some clarity on that. So you said your motion was to leave the budget as is. I already made a motion to increase the teacher supplement up to two thousand, so the-
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We have a motion and we have a, a second, as far as line item.
Board stipend increase.
Uh, board stipend, uh, increase, uh, those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Wait, I was-
Right, those, yep.
I was gonna say, Donna might need to, if you hold your hands up so Donna can take-
So the ayes?
The ayes.
We have a motion on the floor, and the motion is to remove the board stipend increase. That is the motion, to remove the board stipend increase. Those in favor of that, uh, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Raise your hand up or, or down. The motion is to remove the board stipend increase. Look. So, one, uh, five, those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it.
So I will make those adjustments, are there, are there any other recommendations? Okay. Um, and again, the rest of the presentation is, um, the graphs and other supporting documents. Are there any other questions?
Just thank you again to Ms. McLamb and your, you and your team. Uh, we will have documentation sent over to the county by the end of this week.
Yep.
And we want to say thank you again to the board. Thank you.
And Ms. McLamb, I mentioned this, but we wanna make sure that this is a budget, uh, request to the county. Uh, and once the county, um, gets this request, it will be up to them to, uh, to look at, uh, the budget. So, it'll be totally up to them.
I make the motion also, we vote on the budget request as amended.
A second.
We need to do that.
We have a motion to, to approve the budget as amended. All those in favor of the budget as amended, uh, say aye.
Aye.
How many is that? Uh, five. Uh, those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, five, four. All right.
Um, we have six, um, policies for first review tonight. Um, I will try and answer any questions that any of you might have on any of them. Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, board comments?
Mr. Chair. Um, good evening. Um, I wanted to say, um, on Saturday, we heard some of our, uh, community members, uh, share about our town hall meeting that we had in District One. It was an amazing, an amazing, uh, uh, event.